Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call to the community, this is time for citizens who'd like to address the commission on any non-agenda item. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to asking staff to review the matter, asking that the matter be put on a future agenda, or responding to criticism. We don't have anybody on the agenda for... Nope? Okay. Response to call to the community. We, I believe, had people at the last meeting, but they didn't speak during call to the community, did they?
None spoke, but nothing that required a response from us.
Public Works, monthly report presenter Kyle Ames, director of Public Works.
Thank you Chairperson Taddy, members of the commission. Just a few things, main things that I want to touch on through the report. We've completed the Christmas decorations, as you can see in the center of town. We added the ten-foot Tweety stand-in picture-taking ornament. It's been a big hit. We've got a lot of compliments on that stuff, as well as the big red glow down here in front of City Hall. Various signs have been installed. We've added additional thirty-five mile-per-hour signs on Camelback Road, as well as Litchfield. Here in the next couple of weeks, we will be putting up solar speed signs as well. As you see in the center of town, we've added the stopping flashing stop signs. Those were installed, I think, last week or two weeks ago. We'll be installing the flashing yield signs at the Litchfield Roundabout, anticipating maybe next week, if not the following week. So those should be... Thankfully, we didn't install those because there was an accident last week that actually wiped out one of the yield signs, so kind of helped us out on that one, so.
Maybe it would have helped.
Yeah. We're...I'm working with some general contractors to get some quotes or proposals for the Stax Park restroom and the Tier Verde Lake Dock restoration. I met with a few contractors earlier this week and one last week, so I'm waiting for those proposals to come in so I can start getting started on this project as well. And the other big one is we've been working on a new alarm system with bay alarms for public facilities, City Hall, Rec Center, and Public Works. We're anticipating this project should be wrapped up first part of January, second week of January. They are complete with City Hall, except for one more door. Public Works is finished, and now they're jumping over to the Rec Center, so hopefully we have that up and running here in the next couple of weeks. On that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So does that include the bathrooms, the park bathrooms for the alarm system?
No, it does not. Unfortunately, we don't have internet access to those areas. Going into the future with the city center development, if we do have more of like a public Wi-Fi, we'll be able to utilize that for those restrooms eventually, and potentially, with the two little passages here, to be able to put cameras, you know, and kind of avoid the... But as for the city park restrooms, we've explored some options. It's called webbing, but it's very expensive, and it's more of a...trying to figure out if we can do this. It's more like a portal jumps, so we can start, you know, jump... But there's a possibility that in the future, we might be able to put cameras, but we're still working on that. Interesting. I think it's needed in some of the parks because of just the ongoing vandalism that we have through the city park restrooms, and it seems to be in spurts, you know? There'll be a couple of months where we don't have any, and then all of a sudden, we have a ton of it. And then it kind of phases out, and then comes back in, so it would definitely help.
How many...did you say...what did you say about signs on Camelback? You put in some new ones, is that right?
Additional thirty-five mile-per-hours, yeah.
I haven't driven there lately, but is there one...I think I remember when I would turn out a Safeway and head east, I wouldn't see one for a long time, so I don't know if...was there one in between there, do you know?
Yeah, so there's more to the east. I'm trying to think, just past Viennueva.
Okay.
The ones that are going to be on the west side of Viennueva are going to be the solar speed signs that are going to be placed up, yeah. Yeah, we're going to kind of center them out through Camelback and Litchfield.
And then the stop sign, the stop signs, what was the purpose in installing those?
It was a request by council, just a notice. We've had a lot of people running those stop signs at the roundabout. People are doing that, I guess you call it the California stop, not fully stopping. So it was just more of a visual thing of, hey, this is a stop. It's not a yield to traffic.
Not a traffic circle?
Yeah, it's a four-way stop.
Okay.
So if there are any other questions, I have one more question.
Sure.
So with the orange trees, do you know how many orange trees they have to replace? And generally speaking, what's the cost on them?
So as of right now, we're upwards of twenty-six. I've put an order in for thirty, because, you know, we are losing some more. So the...I've contacted pretty much every nursery in the valley to get something that's eye-catching, not just, you know, a foot off the ground and a twig. Unfortunately, Moon Valley Nursery is the only one to actually have some size trees, orange trees, and they're expensive. I've sat down with the city manager, and we discussed this. He's okay with it, so I'm going to start moving to potentially start purchasing in groups. Come springtime, they will be starting to be planted. I don't want to plant right now in this cold. We risk the chance of them not picking or surviving. So come springtime, we're going to start replacing some of these.
Do they come painted? Do they come...they don't?
Actually, they do. I take that back.
They paint it?
They do. Yeah, the nursery's painted.
What's the ballpark on the valley trees that we're looking at?
I put a order of thirty in, and that's thirty-two thousand dollars.
Holy moses.
I bought a peach tree last year from them.
They're about fifteen hundred bucks a piece for a twenty-four...yeah, twenty-four-inch box.
No, like, discount for...
That is discounted. Originally, I got them half off.
At fifteen hundred, that would have been forty-five thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Would the inventory somewhere else change between now and spring? But I suppose you have to do the order now, or you won't get them, because somebody else will drive them if they're somewhere else.
Right, so unfortunately, orange trees are very slow-growing trees. They're not...it takes years for them to get to the size that we currently have. Most of the suppliers in the state buy from Yuma, the growers out in Yuma. During COVID, a lot of the orange trees were bought out because of, you know, people not leaving. They just decided, hey, we're going to buy our own citrus trees, grow them in our house, we'll pick them, you know, have our own produce here. Even Southern California buys from the supplier out in Yuma. I've even called the supplier, the main supplier in Yuma, to see what kind, and they...unfortunately, Moon Valley buys them all. And the marketing, I get it, but...
Wow.
But we're going from, you know, a foot, two feet, orange trees, to Moon Valley's are, you know, roughly four to six feet tall. So they're a big size difference, but you're...you know, obviously, we're going to have to pay for that.
Do they guarantee them for a year or anything?
Ninety days.
Is there any capacity, or does it make any sense, to buy some of the cheaper variety? Just throw them with a watering system in the back of the maintenance yard for when you need them?
I wish. I've looked at that option, too.
Throw your own, so to speak, yeah.
Yeah, we'd have our own orchard or orange grove. I just don't have the space.
Yeah, the basket.
Yeah, the Public Works yard. I can, you know, there's potential in the future, we could utilize a Littlema Hilltop, you know, for that, too, as well. But with all the development and potential development that's going on, I don't know what's going to happen as of yet.
That's a good idea.
Is there a difference in the non-edible orange trees? Do they grow faster, and are they more available?
Yeah, the sour oranges do grow a little bit quicker than the edibles, Arizona sweets or Valencia's. But even the sour oranges, their sizes are relatively the same, and cost isn't much different. The ornamental trees are more used for, you know, blocking, you know, wall structure, a divider. Years ago, we decided to start moving into the edible oranges so we can utilize them. You know, residents can pick them, schools can come and grab them if they want them for stuff like that. Because when we have these orange trees picked yearly, they just get disposed of, and it's a waste. I've called a lot...I've called the Phoenix Zoo, I've called the zoo off in northern three oh three, to see if they want to take the oranges, that they don't want the sour oranges. The animals don't like them.
Hard animal.
But they used to use the ornamental orange trees for in front of the homes, right? And even for...they were more common.
Well, back in the day, you sold them to Canada for marmalade. I heard of that.
Yeah, there is some people out there...we used to have some residents come and pick a lot of them, but they've stopped. We haven't seen them in the last few years, but they do use them for like marinades and marmalades and jams. But yeah, we haven't seen them in a while.
Are there any more questions? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Community and Recreation Services Monthly Report presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you Chairperson Taddy and Commissioners. I don't know why, it feels like kind of a light monthly report. Our lifeguards are still...we are maintaining about eight of them that are still on staff that help keep the pool and deck maintained in the off-season, and then also work as needed on special events for us, too. In terms of preschool, our students have been holding a Joy to Socks drive that ends tomorrow. They collect new socks for adults and children. That gets donated to the Phoenix Rescue Mission. So if anybody has any that they'd like to drop off over the next couple of days, I'm sure they'd be happy to take them and put them towards their donation. They'll be closed for the holidays, actually says December twenty-fifth to January fifth, those two weeks, but also December twenty-second as well for Christmas Eve observed. For our community services, our staff has actually been out these last couple of days judging the homes that entered our holiday home decorating contest. These are about fifteen of them total. We have four different categories, and there were some in each category. Don't know the tallies yet, but winning homes are supposed to be notified tomorrow, and top homes receive a hundred dollars cash prize each, and a lovely lawn sign to put in their yard to display for all their neighbors to see. So we will post the announcement on the winners on the website and on social media, so that that hopefully draws people to their homes to admire. We also have a flag-raising ceremony coming up next Wednesday, the twentieth. This will honor Space Force, it'll be their third anniversary, and the US Air Force will be out doing the flag-raising. And we are still waiting for confirmation from a Space Force local recruiter, or regional recruiter, actually, to see if they'll be out as well. We had someone out last year, that was fun, so hopefully they'll do that again. Special event, as you all know, Christmas in the Park took place last Saturday. It was well-attended, the parade was large and long, but fun. Then the Sunday after, we had the Arizona Swing Kings out to put on a holiday concert on the front lawn of the Wigwam. That was also well-attended. I think we had about eight hundred people out there to watch that concert. And then now our staff is just working towards all our January events. We've got the Litchfield Park Gathering, our Native American Festival, that's the next thing a month from now, January thirteenth and fourteenth. We've got a Motown Experience Concert that weekend after, Sunday, the twenty-first of January, and then our trout fishing derby the following Saturday, January twenty-seventh. And we are not quite sold out in our morning competitive session, and then still plenty of space in the afternoon for those that want to just come out and recreationally fish. But it's been kind of crazy how many people are trying to get their spots, and are mad if someone else got the spot they wanted first, so it's been interesting, but it should be a fun time as well. So lots on the agenda for special events, and I'll turn it over to Pat to share with you updates on sports.
Yeah, thank you, Tricia. So our winter sports season is underway, practices have started. We just filled our last T-ball spot on Tuesday, so we are completely full. We have about three hundred and seventy-two in basketball and then sixty in T-ball, so we're excited to get the season started. They're just practicing right now, and then we take a week off for Christmas, and then games for those start January sixth, so we'll be using the...some gyms for the basketball and all the three and four T-ball will be at Jackie Robson for that. So our adult cornhole tournament unfortunately was supposed to be happening in November, but it rained out, and we had to cancel that, so we did reschedule that for Saturday. So we're excited to still be able to hold one, and we're able to keep it...get about eighteen teams for that Saturday that'll be able to come out and attend. Sadly, it means, you know, no Scrappy McBaggins or Commissioner Culbert can't attend this makeup, so we hope to see you guys in the next year, so. Our run, we're up to forty-five registrations. Registration is still ongoing for that, and then that's going to be on February twenty-fourth in the upcoming year, so it's good to see the numbers that we have so far for that. And then that's about it for sports.
Yeah, so that's what's happening in Rick. If you guys have any questions, just let us know. Otherwise, thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
In the past, I think there was a map of the houses that entered into the Christmas light. Tried to find it this week, I couldn't find it. I don't know if I'm too early, or...
No, I don't think that they've posted it yet. They are working on it, so I'm assuming it will be up this weekend, yeah.
Okay, thank you. China's question on the Christmas lights also. If you're a winner last year, are you still eligible to be a winner this year?
Yeah. And it's never exactly the same people that are judging, so it's usually fresh perspectives each year, too, yeah. But we don't have anything in our rules that says previous winners year before can't do it.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Approval of minutes, presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you Chairperson Taddy and Commissioners. The minutes are in your packet. If you have any updates or proposed changes, please let us know. Otherwise, entertain a motion.
I approve the minutes from November ninth, twenty-twenty-two, regular meeting. Are there any questions? All in favor to approve the minutes, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Minutes are approved.
Thank you Commissioners.
Camelback Park perimeter wall and parking project. Discussion of possible action to propose additional feedback to the city engineer's consideration in finalizing plans for the perimeter wall and parking plans for Camelback Park. Presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
That was actually supposed to have your name attached to it.
I'm...well, I'm next.
Okay.
But I'd be certainly happy to help in whatever way.
Happy to introduce the discussion. So I think that most of you were able to attend the November thirteenth Public Input Meeting that was led by our city engineer, Keith Dranaski. I just wanted to make sure that this was on the agenda in case there was any further discussion, comments, proposed feedback that you wanted staff to get back to the city engineer. He is planning to come to our January RPG meeting to put all of the revisions in front of you, hopefully for approval, and from there, your recommendations will be brought to council at a meeting following that. But before he finalizes anything, if you guys have any thoughts, comments, suggestions that you want us to pass along or considerations, we're happy to do that. I know that Chairperson Taddy, I think, had some thoughts that he wanted to share.
And just to clarify, nothing's changed since that meeting?
Not...
Plans or anything?
Not that we're aware of, but they are working on it.
And of course, still those things for the community. I know there's been quite a few community members that have been reaching out, expressing their thoughts on it, too.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions?
I was unable to make that meeting. What was the...what was the general gist of what you heard from the community?
So I think that the community members that spoke would like to see the wall fixed and raised. There was kind of a fifty-fifty on whether they wanted view fencing as part of it or not. Guys, correct me if I'm wrong, I know you were there, too. And in terms of parking, I think that's the biggest debate. The community members that spoke up, my opinion was they were not in favor of a parking lot.
I think at least I got it, the most focal ones are the ones that live right around there, yeah. I wouldn't want a parking lot there either. Yeah, and one of the main changes since we last talked about is before, they were going to try and do the grass block.
Right, right.
But that's off the table.
That doesn't work anymore.
Yeah.
It was...
Wasn't...
Yeah, the grass blocks were going to be a difficult project going into the future, just between, you know, the watering systems, trying to get enough water in the parking lot when people are parked there. It just...it's a nice design, and it's very pleasing to see, but it's more for somebody's backyard versus essentially a driveway, you know, a driveway. So it just didn't make sense.
Was there ever any consideration to just putting, you know, no zen parking along that area where there's no houses, like across the street?
On the gravel area?
Yeah, like this area right here. So you're not taking any park space, you're not across the street from anybody's house, and still be on-street parking. There wouldn't be a parking lot, per se, but there'd be parking spots at least.
I'm not sure. I don't think that was ever proposed. I know there was parallel parking proposed along the curb, but that section there, I don't think that was ever proposed. It'd be something that we can probably pitch to the city engineer.
I think it might be the...especially, I mean, these costs, it goes doubled since we first started talking about this, right? Everything's doubled in price, right?
And the number of spots has gone down to...
Then you're not having to worry about the trees and doing special, you know, surround a tree and submit. That's not going to make it live very long, you know? But that canal runs there, too, so I don't know if that's a problem. Oh, is there a canal under there?
Oh, huge, and they can't put anything on top of it now.
The airline canal runs there.
I didn't realize that. I was actually going to bring that up.
I didn't realize that.
Is it the Red Line?
So on this one right here, so the two things that kind of struck me were the first, the view is affected because you can't have the grass come through the parking lot anymore, so it's a different view. But then the second thing was, on this slide, the parking lot comes out approximately ten feet, I believe you said, from the outside wall. So he had some suggestions about what to do with that ten feet, but I think one of the appeals of the parking lot was that it was sort of snuggled up against the wall in this corner over here, but now because of that canal, and because they can't move it, it's more out here.
Red's the airline pipe you're talking about, and you can't put anything on top of that.
Right. It's very shallow, they said. You want all the weight on top of it? I think they even mentioned about trying to encase that, too, that just helps support the weight of it, but I'm not sure how far or how much farther that went.
And it's already raised. I mean, if you go up to that wall, you can tell where it is, because it's raised. There's a hump there.
So those were the big differences that kind of struck me, and when they started talking about solutions, they spoke about programmatic solutions, like, well, what if we potentially use the park glass for sports during the week, maybe? What if we change the...I'm going to use the wrong vernacular. What if they changed how the traffic was coming through the area by changing the speed limits or putting speed bumps? So there are some solutions there that might help make it a safer environment. At the end of the day, whatever we suggest to the council would have to go from safety on the one hand to, as compared to usability and how it looks and how it feels for those neighbors to be walking out the front door and what they see.
Speed bumps isn't a bad idea, because then you're slowing down traffic where people are parking and loading cars and stuff like that.
The other thing is that they've added a turn lane to part of the project.
The right turn lane on Camelback?
Yeah.
So it cuts into a little bit of the park?
Uh, not really. Not really, because of the extra land that they got, but...
It's about twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five feet from the turn lane to that back of the wall.
I think they just want to combine it for cost, to make it part of one-figure project.
These pictures make it look like there's going to be a huge parking lot right outside of their houses, but is there still plans to have like a big, like, tree wall or like brush wall so that the headlights aren't going into their houses?
Or...
Yeah.
Yeah, that was part of the plan. With some landscaping in front of it, yeah.
That really used to be as much...
That exit has headlights going right into that person's house there. Like, yeah, I think they said they'd put an island in there so your angles, you have to go...
So you go one way or the other.
Yeah, you can't...
I see what you're talking about, yeah.
One way in, one way out.
Correct, yes.
Right? So that kind of helps that situation.
I mean, if you put enough landscaping there, I think you could make it look nicer than...
Just a bare naked place.
Do we get a lot of complaints about the parking on the street, then?
About the parking itself?
It's awful. But, I mean, I drive by there when there's soccer games.
I think it's more of a safety issue, too. During sports, a lot of the kids are running out, you know, in between cars into the road. I think that was the biggest stem for this parking lot to be installed into this.
I mean, and I don't mean to sound callous, and it will, but sometimes parents need to take some responsibility for their children as well. I mean, people park on the street all over this world, and, you know, I don't know that we need to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars for people to not have to watch their children. It doesn't sound feasible to me, I don't know. And I have kids that age, but they know better than run a damn street. Is it Osborne Road that's right there, too?
Osborne? What road is that?
Pardon me, I'm thinking of...
Oro Vista?
Oro Vista. So there were a few complaints about people that would park into the Oro Vista where you would pull in right there, too.
And they're pulling into that area of the community.
Yeah. So the biggest shifts that I thought about after the meeting were, there's fewer parking spots in this proposal. It's pulled off the wall and moved a little bit to the east where there would be more homes there, and it's sort of almost creating a little bit of...I don't want to call it wasted space, but there's...I mean, you could...there's things you could do with that ten feet behind there, but it creates kind of a funny...I mean, is it a pathway? Is it like a jogger's path? I don't know.
So is this the final draft, so to speak? Is that the one we're considering right now, or are we still considering, these are old drafts?
No, that was, yeah, that's the most current.
Yeah.
So these are, these are, like, this is the grass one and this is, that one goes over the compound.
Yeah, those were the ones that were proposed to you guys originally, yeah.
And these ones are scrapped. These ones are scrapped too, though.
Older.
Chairperson Taddy, um, the, the section between the parking lot and the wall, the new proposed wall, um, there has been discussions of maybe putting, you know, shaded sitting areas in that, in that area, um, for, you know, park reservations, um, stuff like that. So I think, you know, going in the future, if this parking lot is approved and the wall is set back to, uh, the new alignment, obviously, you know, we've looked at options to be able to put something in there to kinda utilize that space a little bit.
So it's not just space behind the parking lot kinda thing?
Yep.
That makes sense.
I think we even discussed about maybe even putting in a small, like, play structure too. Uh, playground for, you know, younger kids, kinda like we have at, uh, Scout Park. And there was a, uh, a talk to even put in, in a, uh, permanent cornhole boards. Uh, set, made out of concrete.
I like that. There was, there was some talk about potential for, um, pickleball courts in the back corner, I thought, too, possibly?
I think that was just within our little group.
Was it?
Yeah, I think that was way unofficial.
Very unofficial, some unofficial, unofficial.
I do wonder if like this layout is the best for what the park is used for. Because right now there's, there's a three soccer field, it's kind of at an angle. Could, could we get another one in there, or would that even make sense? Do we have it used for additional fields or...
Uh, this park, we, it's for our older soccer, um, maybe our ten twelve, so we have really the one bigger sized soccer field there. And then we do move our flag football, um, there in the fall, for the older kids to do that too, so. Um, really, you can only fit that one big sized one for the, this age group, but that one is fourteen kids per team. So obviously the, two teams out there, and then if grandparents or aunts, obviously family come, that's just, that's where the, all that parking comes on, you know, on the side and stuff. So while this does, I mean, I mean, I've driven the past, past year on game days and it's parked on all the way down. We've had to put signs out to say no parking on one side just because of the, the width as well and the safety issue of people parking on the same side that you can't get two cars down that, that road.
So, you know, and Pat, you, you, you know this better than anyone here. You got twenty-eight teams, I, I guess, twenty kids, a car and a half per kid, probably on average, right? Between grandparents, you know, one, one parent drives the kid there early, the other one comes later when the game starts. So that's forty-five-ish spots.
Yep.
And we have twenty-two here. So half the people are still gonna park on the street.
Thirty-one.
And then the people that show up early for the next game aren't gonna have anyone to park in there, so they're gonna park on the street. I don't know if this stops street parking.
We do, um, especially for soccer because of that, we do...
Have a half hour between games, whatever.
Half hour between games, to try for the teams that are there, give everyone some leeway to make sure that they get out before the new teams kind of come in and...
This is gonna stop people from bleeding out further, but we'll still have parking on the street in front of the, unless we say no parking there. But then there's not, there's not gonna be where, right?
Where would they go?
They probably run with Aleppo, there's not enough parking spots there when you have, when they have games. Um, I mean, I've had, I've gotten, please come on and tell me I can't park, you know? Um, but we're still gonna have people parking on the street there unless we say no parking. Is that part of this? There's not enough spots there for two teams to play.
That would be...
That seems, that seems like an awful waste of money for not enough parking.
Good feedback, yeah.
Yeah, maybe some sort of combination of doing a wider street to have off-street parking, like even just in front of that parking space.
Like the ones that are cut out on Aleppo, you know?
Yeah.
You know, you're getting an extra ten feet on that side of the park, you know? People aren't actually parking in the driving way.
Yeah.
I think that is being considered if I'm not mistaken.
I imagine that's probably cheaper too.
It was proposed, this parking lot with parallel parking in some of those areas as well to, to utilize that.
The first time this was proposed, I made the comment that we're Litchfield Park, not Litchfield Parking Lot, 'cause we had like three parking lots we were considering at that one meeting, I don't know, come on. So that's my two cents.
Yeah, I'd like to see some other improvements made to the parks. Um, I mean, if you're putting in a big parking lot, like, what else would put in, uh, basketball court or something at the same time? Might make it go over a little easier with residents.
Yeah, they'll love the ball.
Okay, well...
And the initial drafts had so many more parking spaces too, right? They were, they were up close and...
I think we're, we're at forty, at least at forty.
Especially ADA, ADA spots consume more for the voting than the voting, so that's why we've limited it down to thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two spots.
And I think they tried to add some bulk parts.
I think for me, as I've looked at this and heard feedback and some different things, I, I think I'm, personally, I'm no longer in favor of a parking lot at all. It might mean we can't use it for as many sports, or I don't know, but I, I don't, I'm not in favor of taking up that much of the park with parking lot, especially like you said, it's not gonna meet the needs for parking. I think it'd be good to explore the other options like lowering the speed limit, speed humps, widening to add some spots so it's not as much in the road. Um, but I'm personally not in favor of a parking lot at all.
I wonder if you could just do angled parking going in and not have to have the whole roundabout? 'Cause I was thinking, I mean, maybe just a smaller parking lot, like a lot smaller, if it's not gonna meet the needs anyway.
Right.
Then, I mean, you could just do angled parking in, and you avoid taking up all that space with the whole, trying to get the fire truck roundabout in there. And you'd probably get just about as much parking spots.
You'd get more parking spots with angled than the parallel, right? The, the, the parallel, you, if you ang, put a bunch of angled spots on the side of the road, that would fit more than would be concurrently parallel.
Yeah.
I would think it would have to...
'Cause now you're looking at, you know, two-thirds, or half, half to two-thirds of the car.
Saying directly on Vianueva?
Yeah.
Angled into the park on Vianueva?
Yeah.
I think that was proposed too, and I think it was more of a traffic concern, traffic study.
So backing out.
Backing out. I won, yeah, I wonder though...
And that curve too was kind of tough, 'cause you're backing out people who are around that curve.
Yeah.
I wonder if that could be mitigated by lowering the speed limit and putting in traffic humps, so it's been, people wouldn't be flying around going thirty or something.
Speed limit is twenty-five, I said, right?
Yeah. So I, I, yeah, I think, I'd be more open to that idea of some sort of...
I think the speed humps, like the ones we have on Bird Lane, if we can do them right the first time, that would solve a lot of our issues, right? Why did they move the two in the west side?
There's flooding.
Flood control.
Oh, flood issues.
I'd be curious to see, so they were talking about a potential traffic study. I'd be curious to see it, like, the data on a traffic study that after they put the speed bumps in, just to see how much it does in fact lower the speed limit come, not speed limit, lower how much, how fast people are driving, how much they're speeding around that corner. And I'd also be very interested to see, Pat, do we have the capacity to not use that park as much? To limit the, so for example, I know for soccer, they're gonna start there in February, March, late February, early March?
Yeah, the, uh, coaches' leagues early March and then practice starts there the week after, so I think March fourth, they could start practicing there.
So perhaps, well, I mean, do we have the capacity to just not practice there, maybe just have games there, or like programmatic shift?
Fewer teams.
That amount of teams in that big a field, we only have Aleppo and Camelback that can, that ha, can have teams there for that, those age groups. And with the amount, we've had, we've had six U-ten and then four and then six U-twelve. And so we, we can't give everyone two weeks, two practices a week, um, for those, those age groups if we only have...
Yeah, without lights, we have limited timeframe for everybody.
Which you're, you're still limited to on parking, because we, we're, essentially running into a lot of these issues with a lot of parks just parking issues, not enough parking.
And then at spring, spring, all of our fields are being used one way with all of our, we have flag football and soccer, so all the parks are being used by the sports.
Scout has the flag football, correct?
And then fall, we, um, need to use that for our flag football, 'cause we close, when we close Scout down to oversee Scout, we move the, we, we move it to Camelback and Aleppo. The divisions are separating to having that there.
And I know the question's been asked before, but when was the last time it was seriously discussed to maybe look at the schools and use of the schools' fields?
Oh, like the backend stuff? Uh, that gets tricky, 'cause we would, we do need to pay to use the school. Like, we have the outdoor courts for, with, for basketball right now, and we do pay the school for those. Um, we used to have T-ball at the LES fields behind there, but we, we got charged the lights as well as the, uh, it just got starting to, to expensive to be able to use there. We, we do still have to pay the schools to use their facilities.
Is Millennium the same way, if there's no practice fields?
They charge for the left. Yeah, the, uh, Millennium is the same way, um, the parking, we, we have tried the, uh, last spring, we, we reserved that field by the baseball field to try to do the overflow, but that still didn't really...
People don't, people don't wanna park there.
People didn't wanna park all the way there.
They wanna cram.
But as far as like fields and stuff there, they do charge to use the fields and everything like that.
So what's our requested action on this?
There, there's a report of the engineers, sorry?
Yeah.
Four hundred thousand.
Feedback from you guys, if there's any collective feedback, or if anyone feels strongly, one way or the other, we wanna pass that info on before they finalize anything. 'Cause I don't want them to come to you in January, and then that's when they're getting all your initial requests.
I think safe to say our, our feedback is sort of shifted towards the, let's, let's see what speed bumps can do? Is that, speed bumps, programmatic shifts? And put a hold on the parking lot for now, is that, that's...
I mean, I think our main concern is that it's not enough parking, it's not gonna address the issue.
Doesn't solve the issue, changes the aesthetics with the parking lot moved eastward and taken off the wall and the concrete rather than the grass.
Is the parking lot discussion separate from the wall and the right turn lane, or is this all one discussion?
The wall is a separate discussion, that would be a view versus a full wall.
Yeah.
I think people are kinda split on that, huh? So do we need to kinda like divide this up into different suggestions?
So I think...
Between parking lot, street, walls?
I think the parking lot would be one set of suggestions or one suggestion, and the wall would be another.
I'm with Brian on the parking lot. I, I'm not a fan of the parking lot. I think there's other ways to mitigate it so that we're not throwing good money after bad, Pat.
I mean, I liked the initial design. Right. 'Cause it didn't take up very much of the lot and it was...
That's exactly what I'm looking at here too, I, I, the initial designs were so much more appealing and...
Yeah, yeah.
Just being further west to...
If it worked, it would've been great, but now we're so far off that original idea.
Mm-hmm.
You like the original?
Yeah, yeah, like the original design, it, it left a lot of the field. It had, it had forty-five or whatever spots. And this seems like a, a compromise that doesn't really achieve the original goal.
Does anybody think this is now more appealing too, that the other parking lot has become further east? So the one that shows the, the sky? I almost feel like that one is more appealing now based on what we now know about what we could do in the other area. If, um, we didn't see a, a change, a meaningful change after the speed bumps are installed?
You're looking at, um, the left side or the right side?
The right side of, this guy right here.
The one that's, uh, right next to the playground.
Close to the playground.
Yeah. Right in front of the, the playground and the bathroom. It has, it has to be right in front, right? Of those.
It gives you like fourteen parking spots, about that sort of, yeah.
And it gives the parallel parking, which could also be maybe cut out, I don't know.
Thirty-one spots, fourteen parallel.
Oh, yeah, scout D's over here, yeah, sorry, yeah.
Do we know where that number came from? It looks like this other one was thirty-one. And this one's thirty-one, like why, who came up with thirty-one parking spots?
That was our previous City Engineer.
I think it was based off...
Who he was working, yeah, he was working.
How much allowable space was in that area, was not impeding it to physical streets.
I guess if, if I was, I would love to see, let's find out what's speed bumps and maybe, maybe speed limita, I think speed bumps automatically limit your speed. You know, I don't know if you need to change a speed zone in the city, it's not a school zone from twenty-five. But I think if you put two of those speed bumps, bump lane we have on Bird Lane, could we do without causing problems for floods or for our maintenance equipment? Slow people down there, make it safer for those who have stolen running wild in the streets and...
Back home, what?
That would be my proposal.
So if the reason for the parking lot is to remedy safety concerns, then you say, let's start with the, the speed bumps and see if that remedies the safety concerns?
And I think that our neighbors there would be much happier with speed bumps than parking lots.
Agreed.
They probably think people drive too fast there anyways. I do make sure the speed bumps have the cutouts for cyclists.
They, they know all about speed bumps.
That was brutal, when you guys put the full speed bump across there, in Bird Lane, that was brutal. Getting them detailed, not assault.
Just in the bygones for you.
So if we shift onto the perimeter wall, this one kinda shows you what the view wall is versus what's just the full wall is, which I think we're all familiar with the full wall anyway.
What's the feedback from our community? Kinda split, or?
One neighbor said that she, she didn't, I'm paraphrasing, but she didn't, like, the idea of a full wall because she didn't find next to a park to look at a wall was, was almost her exact words, right?
She also didn't wanna look at a Taco Bell and the, the car wash and...
There were other residents.
You see the park, and you don't, I'm, I don't, I don't know if I see the wall. You know, I, I look at Turtle Park and that'd be fancy nice, but you're not looking across the street at fast food and car washes.
Correct, yeah.
And I think another idea that they've talked about is doing view fence for park, solid for park, like, it doesn't have to be one or the other.
It depends on the angle you're on, right?
Wasn't it mainly on the corner because it's kind of like a noticeable area for Litchfield Park because it is on that big intersection? And so it's a way to kind of show off the park a little bit, but maybe only on the corner and back. I'm really bad at distance, so I don't know. And then solid from there. So they would still get some relief from all the commercial stuff, but...
The, the full, the full wall is actually a great for sound barrier as well.
Yeah, that's true.
Camelback is very, is a very busy road.
Yeah.
It, it does help with cutting back that sound, uh, coming across that park.
I mean, I could see having the view on that corner because it's the farthest point from any of the houses too. And if it wasn't, you know, all the way, then you do get a little peak, both from the inside and the outside, and then solid the rest of the way.
You know, I'm thinking of...
Like an amphitheater though, with all the traffic noise being directed into the park.
Oh, yeah, I don't know about that, yeah.
I'm thinking, you know, people would look into the park when they're at the stop sign, right? Hopefully not while they're driving through, right? And so I'm just thinking, like, where would you get your bang for your buck on people glancing sideways, saying, oh, wow, I wanna live there, you know?
Yeah, it's a little, you know, I, I see wanting to show it off.
Yeah, I agree, and that's what Turtle Park does for, you know, you drive by and you don't see a wall, you see park.
Yeah, and I think if you're at the park, or if you're driving by, it feels more open if you can see versus... Yeah, and I think if you're at the park or if you're driving by, it feels more open if you can see versus just being fenced off, there's a wall there.
I kinda like the idea of the sectioned, you know?
Yeah.
And so, you know.
Mixing it up.
If you, if you're gonna set up a picnic and you don't wanna see Denny's, you set it up so you have a wall between you and Denny's. You choose that, you know, it's all angles, it's, you know, and, and so it doesn't bother you, you get that view and it's, you're not funneling any noise, it's gonna be everywhere, right? But it could, you know, it could, I don't know how far you're, how periodically, is that, is that a plausible solution from a construction and maintenance? Is there a cost difference at all in view versus solid?
I think that there was in progress.
Probably never.
I don't think there was.
Paying for steel or concrete, maybe one or two.
One neighbor had mentioned that, so there's this area here where there's really not a home, but it looks right onto the golf course.
Yeah.
One neighbor had mentioned that would probably be a good spot for a view fence.
What I mean, the further part down or?
Which, where the dirt lot is.
I'm sorry, I was probably pointing, so there's.
Yeah, I think that should be useful.
Absolutely, yeah.
I agree with that a lot.
And then right now, that's desert across the street, north side of Camelback there too, isn't it? That's half the laundromat and the.
You're getting towards the.
Yeah, I thought in front of the stable, but.
The organic farm.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, that's, that's not a bad view, right?
Not at all.
Beats a lot of the other ones.
Yeah.
And every now and then you got horses riding around over there or, you know, that's pretty cool to see. But I liked it just for the, you know, the fact that it's not, it's not right outside of somebody's front door too.
Right, right.
Which I think was.
Is there, do you see any prevalence of graffiti, obviously it's tough to graffiti a view fence. Um, do you see a prevalence of graffiti on the exterior or the interior of our solid fences?
Uh, no.
Not that that'd be a concern?
No, we, we don't have a ton of graffiti on our outer.
And when we get it, we take care of it pretty quick, I know.
I think, to be honest, within the last maybe five years, I've, we've had one incident on one park, yeah, corner park, um somebody did some graffiti on the car corner there.
On the south side.
But other than that, we've never, never really had a ton of issues with graffiti in those walls, I guess.
If I had to make a suggestion, I would go with full fencing all around except for the area opposite the, the desert landscape that looks into the golf course.
So, so full, full block fence around the park itself, itself and the view fence is in that granite area.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You, you probably want some sort of gate out of the park, some way to get out of the park.
I think there's a big dome.
No.
Yeah, I don't think you would have.
You gotta go to either one of the roads, yeah.
Yeah.
You don't want, you don't want people having outside access.
There should be some here.
Yeah.
Up here too?
Yeah, I think right on the corner, there should be a view fence.
Looking in from the.
I think they've also talked about putting a, like the big signs, like with a, on the corner, corner, right? Wasn't that a discussion?
The gateway sign.
Gateway sign.
Definitely the one we have, but.
Book-in sign, yeah.
On the southeast corner of the city. Yeah, that'd be, I mean, that'd be a nice matching, right? I mean, that, you know, on these corners.
Mine is the pink background, yeah.
I don't remember, I noticed a pink background.
The sun is uh, is, is done its work.
It wasn't originally painted.
Uh, I think there needs to be, I, I think you put the block fence up, it's, it's just a wall. And our parks are what we are, that's like, I like having some view. Maybe it's not all, but.
You'd be able to see over the wall unless you're right next to it.
What's that?
You'd be able to see over the wall unless you're right next to it, like if you're standing a hundred feet away, you're gonna.
You'd still see the top of all those. You'd still see the top of all those.
It's not gonna feel like an eight-foot wall if it's so far away from it, right next to it, it's gonna feel huge.
I like the idea too of, so what Andy's suggesting, suggesting is that there's view fence in the corner and there's gonna be a sign there that says Litchfield Park? That's a good, that's a good combo too and that's a good option.
I think the only concern there is noise and I don't know it, I, I don't know how noisy it would be, yeah.
Is there a way to get any sort of like artist renderings of what the park would look like with solid versus view versus interspersed view? Cause I think that, that would be valuable for us to see before we make a recommendation.
Um, I think uh, turn around, tell us that's doing this and tell us we may be able to do some kind of ending. I would have to talk with them, we'd have to talk with them.
Yeah, cause to me the solid wall, it seems too closed off, to me the whole stretch, everything, yeah, it just feels too closed off, so I I understand that it would be better for noise and light and, and all that, but it's, I think there has to be a middle ground where it's part view fence, part, part solid would be what I'd like to see.
So view fence, solid wall, view fence corner, and then solid wall south.
I like that.
I'd be hearing more of, yeah, more views.
Yeah, I think more view fence would be my preference, but I'd like to see what it looks like, I don't know if I can imagine it.
Maybe there could be an insert of view in the two solid pieces just to break up the solid. So do the corner, do the, the part down where it's golf course, no houses on the other side? And then maybe just insert in, you know, a section of view fence to break up the whole solid, yeah.
Is uh, let me ask you a question, is the sign that they're putting on the corner, the one on the southeast corner is integrated into the wall, am I correct?
No, I think it's.
No, it's free stand.
There's room behind it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Oh. Okay.
Yep.
I'm just thinking that's because of homeless encampment pretty quick. A big sign blocking, yeah.
Yeah.
Because, but it is a solid wall behind it though. Right. And if we were, if we're staying consistent, is that something that aesthetically we wanna be consistent with the solid wall behind the sign versus clear fencing? You know what I mean, or see-through fencing, I don't know if that's, if that's inconsistent or not from the aesthetics viewpoint.
With Turtle Park having a view fence, it would be the same as Camelback having a view fence because all, everything else is either backing up to residents' yards. So it's, it's a solid.
Are those our only two exterior parks?
Yeah.
That, that view fence on Turtle Park is different than this one, right? Is that view fence?
No, that's, no, that's the.
It's pretty tall, right?
It is Turtle Park.
Just Turtle Park.
It is pretty tall, yeah, that's, I think it's, I think.
It's to your feet, yeah, your feet.
I mean, the, the solid part.
Solid part.
Like the solid part looks like it's, I don't know, two or three feet.
Yeah, probably.
Could be compromised, be, you know, four feet of solid wall and four feet of view fence or.
Right.
Oh, so, so adjusting the height of solid versus uh view.
It might be a good, a good.
That might be, I can compromise and just do that all the way around.
Yeah. So view only on the top portion, is that what you're thinking?
Like half and half almost or?
Essentially, it blocks out like the cars.
I would think it would happen.
Like you can see, bug out the cars and the noise and you can see.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're gonna see the Denny's sign or the car wash sign with any fence anyways, let's be honest.
How much of a factor was noise with the, with the neighbors there? How, how much did we hear them say? I'm trying to think now.
Well, those poor people in that one house that backs up to Camelback, they said they can't sit in their backyard anymore.
The first house?
Yeah.
They just renovated that, I think, too, right, they added on some.
I mean, there's that beautiful front sitting area, but.
That's a consideration. The view, it, it doesn't take away from, the full fence stops the noise, you know, whereas the view fence allows it all in.
I don't know, how, how much noise does an eight-foot fence block? A significant difference, I mean, I don't know.
I would assume so.
Talking solid versus view, yeah. I mean, at least the neighbors that live on Camelback had a noticeable difference just from adding, I don't know, a couple feet of.
Yeah.
I think in terms of enjoying the park, I think that lower sound level would be more enjoyable. In terms of driving past, view fence is more enjoyable.
I think my, my thing is like, again, I, I feel closed off with the solid versus some sort of view fence, just like you're in prison or something.
I, I, I don't mind the idea of the half and half, like making the block a little taller, but keeping the view on top. And, or I, I, I like the idea of a half, half solid, half view, like, you know what I mean? That gives everybody kind of a happy medium, it gives some noise blocking, it gives some view blocking. If you want the view, you have the view, you know, kinda makes everybody happy or nobody happy.
Well, not everybody's gonna be happy no matter what happens.
What are those residents feeling on, on the fence?
The ones that live right here?
Mm-hmm.
I think they, at least the one, a few that spoke up, I know they, they more or less are one, like a solid fence.
But I heard one lady say too that lived there, she, but she said, I like looking.
Right, no, there's no, it's just a short wall.
Yeah.
And so this is gonna be an improvement over whatever, I mean, giving us an eight-foot barrier, there was, and the noise, I mean, I've been on that park hours and hours and hours. I don't feel like the traffic noise is.
No.
And so, give, give us an eight-foot wall now so that people just can't hop over and I think we, we'll win.
There, there for a while we were having issues with uh transit being in, in the park system.
Yeah, yeah.
So this would kinda avoid this too.
Do, do we know if they've surveyed the residents yet? I know Matthew at that last meeting mentioned they're gonna survey the residents again.
I don't think.
I don't believe they have yet.
So before the January meeting, before the January R P G meeting, they would have surveyed the residents again or?
Probably not. We, we request that they would. We would like that.
Consider buy that season.
Fingers crossed.
That's a lot to do with the holidays realistically.
You know, we can.
It's, I think it's important information though, if they.
I mean, we can pass that recommendation on that you guys would prefer that, that city admin and city engineer have met and discussed whatever propose, changes to proposals um with the residents prior to asking for your buy.
There's six houses there, I'll go knock on doors this weekend, it's not gonna take that long, I mean.
Certainly, we could start, you know, our unofficial canvassing of the area too, you know, and I'm sure we all know people over there.
Well, Matthew said, I'm pretty sure Matthew said that he was gonna do another survey of residents.
Yes, he never say that.
I know we've done a survey in the past, but I think it's gonna be, I think this is an additional survey to ask. Cause I think the, the original survey was just directed towards that parking lot, I don't think it was directed towards the wall in general. So I think that's what he was directing it towards.
Yeah, it was about the original parking lot.
Chairman, what are our suggestions on this point?
So I think that there's a couple of suggestions that came out of this. Um, I didn't hear anyone at the table say that we would want the full block all the way around. Sounds like there's a few that are considering it a good option to have the view fence across from the, from the granite area.
Hey, that's.
I think everybody's good.
I think it's unanimous, yeah.
There's a few others that agree that with uh Litchfield Park City sign, we would have view fence in the corner. And then expanding the view fence would be the final option, but I think that we wanna hear from the neighbors before.
See what it might look like.
Maybe some renditions?
Yeah, renderings.
Is there a budget in here for additional landscaping? Cause if you put in like an eight-foot wall, next to have trees or trees, the wall, the wall basically.
I- inside the park or outside?
Yeah, inside, inside the park.
Inside, yeah, that's.
I think the wall is it feel closed in, you know, have the eight-foot wall, but if, hence there, it feels, you know, like an.
Yeah, that would be something that I could probably squeeze in with public works budget to, to add some additional landscaping.
So, so we want some more information on walls, what about parking lot?
I think our parking lot recommendations are, we'd like to see what happens with the speed bumps prior to going after it. I also believe that um if there is a chance for programmatic shifts, maybe exploring them too so that there's just less volume there and less need for parking there if possible.
How many teams practiced there at one time in the spring, what was the most you had there in one time?
Two teams could practice.
That was it? I could've sworn there was four teams now, there might've been like some guys doing club.
Well, they're, they're the thing where.
Yeah.
We only schedule two at a time because of the, the parking, but then there's also issues of people, the outside teams just showing up.
Or just organizations. I don't like the parking, so what I do, I make my kid ride his bike, so.
If you had, then would you be able to schedule more?
It's more comes down to the, the field space really, uh the amount of teams, each team's get to have half the field, cause we only have two goals there. So if we tried to add more, then you, some teams wouldn't get the kind of full purpose of.
Is there space, right, for goal, for goal?
For field, yeah.
I mean, space for the field, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, you would have to push the, those two down and then we'd have to have someone move the go, those extra goals on and off when games come, cause we won't, we wouldn't have definitely just a field.
I mean, good turf, like area, when the park is bigger, the wall's gonna go out, like do we get enough space to have?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think we would be able to fit another.
It's not gonna change it. We took a look at that, the dimensions, to see if.
The dimensions, yeah. Couldn't get another field on there.
I don't think we'd get another.
But then you put another field on there, then you're, you're adding, you're exacerbating the park, yeah, right?
Creating more.
So I don't think we, I think we're scheduling two, that's fine, and if other people on the perimeter's doing workouts, I mean, this will be it, we're not gonna stop that.
Now, if we do, we have to, if we catch them, we let them know obviously what our policies are, reservations, they have to call in, reserve and stuff so that they know it's moving forward. Um, but, most of the time it's just new, new organization sometimes, if it's not our program, then it's, if you see more than the two that's there.
Come out, flash my R P G card out and say, excuse me. So. So our part, our part, we wanna see speed bumps, agree and make a motion on this?
I don't think we have to make a motion.
I don't think we should share the feedback.
So.
So we wanna see speed bumps, we wanna explore the view fencing and what that might look like.
Wanna make sure that residents have.
Do stuff with programmatic, but I think you're doing a lot that you can already. Uh, to, to what a resident say.
And any kind of feedback data, if, if there's any way to collect feedback data, is there a tra- traffic study or what's the average speed after the speed bump?
We like the right turn lane.
I think everybody's.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't, I don't have any feedback on the right turn.
I'd add to that, what we're talking about, about having twenty-eight teams and forty-five estimated cars, that this is not really solving the problem, I mean, maybe it's a little bit, but it's not.
Continue with our street parking.
Yeah.
Are there any more questions about those two discussion topics? I think we got some good suggestions.
Yes, I think that's what we needed to know.
Twenty twenty-four Orange Tree Painting Event presenter Anthony Taddy, R P G commissioner, or pardon me, chairperson. So, something you had said earlier, Kyle, which got me thinking, would it then, so the trees are coming in painted in the springtime? So would it then make sense to look at around the springtime when the new trees are coming in or should we paint? How would we know which trees will be pulled out for the new trees so that we wouldn't waste resources painting?
They're dead. They're already, they're already.
They're already gone?
Or I've seen a couple that have taper or yell.
Yeah, there's a few that are left, but they'll definitely be, they'll be, they'll be removed before that tree paint, I think.
So what's a good time of year then to, to paint?
The same, the same time we do it every year, right, right at the spring break, the, the week after, the week before spring break.
That last time we talked about it, we designated.
Yeah, we, we.
Yeah, sixteen through seventeen.
Sixteen and seventeen.
It's the second week of the spring break. And this year you're getting shirts, you have plenty of time to get your shirts made now.
Are we getting shirts?
We get government work on it.
You were on top of the shirts, I thought.
I will do some shirt investigations. So.
We can get some clothes too.
And who was the gal that had the mixer, we need her.
Yeah, we need a mixer.
We need at least one mixer.
Commissioner Faith brought the mixer, the second day.
Oh, did you?
We need a pan.
It was amazing.
There was a, a gal too that was gonna bring her.
All the ones that connect to a drill.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Andy was going crazy, he's stirring over there all morning that Saturday.
And I think some of the paint was thinner and it didn't last as long, be, maybe because it wasn't.
Well, it wasn't mixed, probably.
I was trying, yeah, no, I was mixing.
I'll freely admit it wasn't.
Unfortunately, that tree paint probably sits in a warehouse for a very long time, cause not a lot of people use that kinda paint.
Yeah.
Um, but I, when we get closer, I'll, I'll explore some different paint options.
And this year, I, I almost feel like we should just buy like a palette, just buy a whole bunch of the tree paint and see how low.
As long as we can use it, because it says it goes out.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are there any questions about the tree painting event this year?
Uh, do you wanna start getting advertising out to the Millennium groups and telling all your friends about it?
I, I do have a, I did have a group reach out to me, uh, about a month ago that are interested to, to assist in this as well.
Great.
I have their number, so, um, I told her I'd contact her closer we, we get to the event and kind of get it scheduled out.
That's awesome. What crew?
Um, I can't remember off the top of my head, but it's in my office. I have it all on a sheet.
All right. I kept a lot of the contacts from last year too. So we have a small army out there.
We'll push out to them first, everybody that came out last year. Um, we'll put a post on social media, we'll set up an event for it. And, um, we can even create a volunteer application online and see how that works. That might catch a lot of the individuals that might not otherwise sign up.
Yeah.
Um, we'll have all the student groups that kind of come in as a group, sign up as a group and let us know.
Do we reach out to Saint Thomas Aquinas?
Yeah, we can.
And JP two and Millennium, we gotta hold their student council.
I think we did last year.
So we have Saint Thomas Aquinas's, the, the, there's a volunteer organization with them. I don't remember, but that's the name, but we have her contacted.
Yeah.
But then today we get word out to all the clubs, is kind of what I'm thinking. Yeah, that'd be a point of contact.
Mm-hmm.
So you don't have to reach out to all the individual clubs, make the, sure their student councils know and they'll spread the word for us.
Do you, Ava, I think last year Key Club had a conference that they were traveling to. Do you know when that conference is this year?
That conference already happened.
Okay.
I will also, we have another one coming up.
Okay.
But, uh, this year, the convention already happened.
Okay, so that may not be an issue this year. Yeah, so we can post it early and start really getting people to get on board with it. As long as you guys are good with that set date. Start the process. If you wanna look into t-shirts, and we can get some quotes too, but, um, we'll have to find where in our budgets we get that money from unless we can find a sponsor.
The nation sponsors.
Well, that's why we have Anthony Taddy, like.
Yeah, on the back, a picture, like a caricature.
Is there any issue having a corporate sponsor? I mean, as long as it's like a suitable sponsorship.
I wouldn't, I don't think so. I mean, we get corporate sponsors for our city events.
Moon Valley to sponsor them.
Right?
Get Moon Valley to sponsor t-shirts.
That's, that's the least they could do.
That's a really good idea, actually.
I might learn to buy them.
I mean, that, that, I mean, you know, hey, you know, you can get shirts made for five bucks a piece.
Yeah.
You know, and how many people do we have out here painting trees? Ballpark?
Jeez, the one year we had about fifty or sixty, right? And then the.
Yeah, I would say you might wanna.
So hey, give us five hundred dollars to go buy shirts with and we'll put your logo on them. It'll be awesome.
I think it'd be easy to find a sponsor for them.
They have a vested.
If they don't want to, we'll get.
A lot of their trees that are gonna be in the park, right?
That's what I need, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I buy my trees there. I mean, that, that's good advertising for them.
It's great advertising.
We'll approach them first.
I have, um, general manager contact for, uh, Moon Valley and I'll reach out to them, see if they're interested.
Do we wanna make any kind of an official post tree painting? I mean, we've gotten pizza and we've just hung out in the parking lot. That seems to happen, you know, every year now. Do we wanna make any kind of a, hey, go to, you know, go to this place and we'll all have pizza, or, you know, whether it's Papa Falls, or do we ever wanna do anything like that?
After the tree painting, or you wanna post that in advance?
Well, this is what I'm wondering. Uh, would it be, would that, the Papa, if we approached, uh, restaurant or something like that? Would they also become a sponsor, or a potential sponsor?
I mean, they would be a potential sponsor.
Somebody wants to donate the pizza, put their name on there too.
See, that's what I'm, maybe. I mean, just another idea, the pizza seems to go over well with the kiddos after a morning's worth of painting. You know, we're always down around one, two o'clock-ish, so.
I mean, we could potentially, I don't, I don't think we've thought about it in the past, but just reserve one of the parks even for everybody to end up there, rather than in the parking lot. And it feels more like a end-of-event party and thank you.
Yeah, a celebration, a thank you, even if you had, if you did it that way, maybe you have a food truck. Maybe.
I don't want people to think they have to purchase from a food truck after the.
Yeah, you gotta point to.
Event, the, we want them to feel like it's a thank you from us for contributing the manpower.
Yeah.
That's a great idea to end it at the park.
Yeah.
At a park, even if it's just like a route, everyone ends at the park.
Camelback Park and then we discuss view fencing.
We may still be doing it at that point.
We'd have to get everybody to a restaurant covered in paint. I don't know, it could go bad.
Yeah, I think it'd be, it might feel better, more casual at the park.
Yeah.
Especially if you got a lot of, um, kids.
Yeah.
My suggestion on the shirt is to not put a year on it. Just put Litchfield Park Annual, Annual Orange.
I agree with that.
And then you save your extras for next year. And if somebody doesn't have one, or they're new to your group, you give them one. If you still have theirs and it still fits them, then that's their shirt.
And if you spit a little paint on it, that's fine, that's your, that's your experience credit from the previous year.
Yeah.
It's your strength.
That's right.
And we can just split up sizing a little bit, give our best estimates and then first come, first served.
Yeah. And then, you know, they're willing to keep that sponsorship and you keep adding to your pot every year and just kind of have shirts ready for it. That'd be kind of fun.
Probably good enough for the sponsorship to cover the pizza. Five hundred for a sponsorship's pretty light.
I don't remember how many pizzas we ordered last time. I don't think it was very much.
This last go round, I don't think you had as many volunteers, but.
No.
No, absolutely.
No, we didn't. The first year, we really hit like an army.
Yeah.
We, we got through the whole city.
Yeah, we were shy last.
Yeah.
Public Works really appreciates this event. It helps us tremendously with this, this event.
And, and maybe the last point is, are there any areas that, um, that need more attention than others? Maybe that would be, or is it just the whole city? Just attack the whole city?
Center of town is the main focus point and then work your, your ways around on the outskirts.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we hit around like, uh, the pond last.
One team got down on one side, but I don't think, and we did get the neighborhood behind the pool, but I don't think we got to the other side, unless you, you know, around the lake, right? And how's our inventory on brushes?
Uh, well, we'll have to purchase some more, but I, I, I put it in the tree maintenance budget.
Okay.
BYOB.
Nice.
Can we start buying paint now, or have you already started?
Yeah, that's what I think, just buy a palette. Um. If we can store it. Assuming we can store it, buy a palette.
Yeah, I, I can reach out to Wellgrow and see if I can just buy, buy the palette full. Um, I'm trying to remember how many, how many gallons that we used last time. There was twenty, I bought twenty-five of them. Okay.
If you can store it, I mean, if it, if it's, if it's somewhere that we could, whether it's gotta be in a, if it's gotta be in a temperature-controlled environment, then we probably shouldn't buy a pa- palette, right? Cause then we might not have the opportunity, unless we have, unless we have that.
I can, I can find, I, I'm sure I can.
Stuff we buy now will be good in March, right?
Yeah.
And it, I'm sure that's in less demand right now. So we're never gonna do it, yeah.
I just hate to waste fifty cans of paint if, if they can't sit around in summer.
That's what I'm saying.
My trees need painting too.
We, we, we do the event in, uh.
You can sell for residents.
There you go.
March or April and, you know, we don't do it the next event till the following spring, you know, that, that paint sits for a year, it's probably gonna go.
Go through that heat, that's what concerns me too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we can revisit this, I guess, as we get closer, maybe in the February meeting? And then just see, okay, where are we with everything and, well, what we should do is probably start announcing right in February too, so that we're about a month out, right?
We'll probably just.
Start now.
Start now?
Yeah.
Till it's January.
So people.
We'll probably just keep it on the agendas so that any updates monthly.
Yeah.
Um, can happen, yeah.
Sounds good.
True.
Okay. Research Survey Proposal, presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services. Is this in here?
Uh, it is, yes. It's the last one. So I, I don't know a ton about this, um, other than we have, um, a former planning and zoning commissioner who is, um, now a doctoral student. That has reached out to the city and asked if, um, some of our boards and commissions would be, um, willing to participate in a study that they're doing for their, um, working towards their doctorate. Um, the study is attached right here. It seems fairly simple. But, um, we're just looking for yes or no if you guys.
You don't want us to fill out the study? Or if we say yes to you, you want us to fill out the study?
Yes.
Okay.
But I can send that to you separately.
I'd.
Or you could hand it to me, um, and I can find out if you guys are in favor of it. I'll find out the details and the deadlines.
I'd be in favor of it, I mean.
Yeah, this is this, these two things.
Yeah, there's nothing there too hard hitting.
That's what I've been told, it seems.
Nothing very hard hitting.
Pretty straightforward.
Where I know all the units.
Yeah, well, we figured you would.
No essay portion.
Yeah.
That's what we base our yes on.
And they're not collecting any of your personal info, just the answers to the questions.
Yeah, sounds good.
I think we'd be happy.
I move that we agree to participate in the doctoral study.
Second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Okay, we'll get you the details.
Commissioners report on current events. Vice Chair Phillips.
Well, I can't tell you the number of people who have complimented the city and filed, uh, rec, or, uh, recreation, uh, public work on the Christmas lights, like. Be, I mean, every day, some of it's that, about those, so. Well, well, well done and then just, you know, loved the parade and, um, great time to be here.
Commissioner Cobra.
Shared my feelings on the Christmas lights last time. I agree, they're, they're awesome. Um, let's see, did, uh, took my youngest daughter to the touch-a-truck event last month. And that was very well attended, it seemed. It seemed pretty busy, um, and, yeah, she, she brought a friend and they had a good time running around checking out all the trucks. It was a good event again. I hope we can keep doing it. Um, and yeah, Christmas in the park, thought it was a success, was well and good event, so. Those are my updates.
Tricia Faith.
I had a great Christmas in the park, was a good success. Seemed a lot bigger than I remember. Oh God, thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Uh, enjoyed seeing some of y'all at the, um, the Christmas, uh, thank you dinner for commissioners. Uh, we're at, uh.
At the Times Square.
Times Square, yeah, that was nice. Um, my, uh, twelve-year-old had a blast at Christmas in the park. I had to drive out to Mesa to, for the older boys wrestling, but, um, he and Bodie enjoyed that quite a bit. He's got basketball going on, he's at practice right now. Uh, so that's going well and, uh, you know, like, you know, it was, it's always a good time to be in the park.
So I'm gonna say it again, the Christmas lights are something special, but I wanna mention that the Christmas lights contest, um, is, you know, you see everybody driving around, looking at the different winners. Last year it was just north of Aleppo, right, where there was that strip of four homes that had a radio station and there would be like a whole bunch of cars there every night. It was a blast. But what I think it, it showed me was too, the yard of the quarter and the Christmas lights kind of have that in common where the Christmas lights do seem to gather momentum. And it does inspire more and more people to put up Christmas lights. And even it, you know, even if it's something little, like you're doing a palm tree in front of your house, or you're, you, I think that you do notice more over time because of that contest. Excuse me. And I look really forward to seeing the winners and driving around with the family and looking at all the Christmas lights. And again, thank you to the guys taking care of the park, the grounds and everything. It's, it's such a shame what happened in the summertime with all the different circumstances that came up. But, uh, holy cow, what a great job just to, just to still look as beautiful as it does. And you see it way more in other neighborhoods, the damage and how they're just having such a hard time recover. So thank you.
Thank you.
And that just leaves one thing, guys.
I move that we adjourn. I'll be the first one to move every time, just.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.